Board of Education meeting for October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Serone. Mr. Gatewood.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Aye.
Dr. Murillo.
Present.
Present.
Mr. Flubbers.
Present.
Ms. Simmleton.
Present.
Ms. Venman.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, four point one, public comment. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our members of the public and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Members of the public interested in speaking to the Board of Education this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the Secretary to the Board. When the Secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters stating staff names or responses to your questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Thank you.
Eileen Faust.
Hello. My name is Eileen Faust. I'm a freshman at Oswego East High School. When it comes to minorities, who do you think of? Well, I'm willing to bet you don't think of the person like me. During the summer of two thousand and twenty-one, I was diagnosed with hearing loss and dragged the rest of the year out of the deaf and hard of hearing community, which I'm still learning about today. The deaf and hard of hearing community is an important part of society, from people who are mute, to people who cannot hear, and all the hearing interference in between. But this community-
Has been significantly isolated from the world for generations due to practically impenetrable language barrier. When my parents were the age I am now, people were bullied and shunned for having glasses, since at the time, not many people, especially kids, would have glasses. And kids would either have terrible eyesight or perfect, with nothing in between. And even the mere thought of a child having hearing aids at the time was unfathomable. Now, having glasses or contacts is not unheard of, and we are at this pivotal point in society again where people aren't just deaf or hearing, but often in the middle. The world is no longer black and white. We are discovering more and more shades of gray. I am one of those shades of gray. Last year, I took a survey of the students at Benarsec Junior High to discover the student interest in an ASL class. Speaking on behalf of the student population as of last year, approximately fifty percent of the students asked were enthusiastic about a possible American Sign Language program to become a part of one of the many foreign languages offered in SD three oh eight. I do not understand why high schools don't offer ASL as a foreign language, especially when it was more and more- when more and more people are coming to terms with hearing losses. Perhaps it is because the lack of interest, understanding, or publicity. While I am here to tell you that the interest still exists, and as a person who gets excited when they see someone else wearing hearing aids proudly, as I do, and a person who starts to cry when someone translates what they are saying in sign language during inauguration of a president, or a child meeting Santa Claus, I am here to say that people like me, who are part of our society, are needing to feel less isolated, less invisible. As humans, we crave connection, be it interaction, holding someone's hand, or just a simple conversation. People in the deaf and hard of hearing community need this as much as anyone else, and having a class dedicated to the culture and communication with this significant community, we can make all the difference in the world, the difference of being heard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Hyerman.
Rick Hyerman.
Welcome.
I'm here to talk about the transportation for the buses and the communication that goes along with it. I'll give an example. It was September twenty-ninth. My kid gets out of school at three forty. At four oh nine, we got a message that it was going to be thirty minutes behind schedule of arrival. Well, it had already been just about thirty minutes. At four fifty PM, we get a message that it was now leaving the school. So in that whole time, the kids were at the gym waiting for their bus to arrive, but no communication to us over an hour after they left. I called the Transportation Department that moment, five minutes later, four fifty-five. No one answered. Left a voicemail for a callback. I've yet to receive a callback to this day, which shocks me. They did arrive at my house at five fifteen PM that night. We had an appointment scheduled, and it's kind of difficult when their scheduled time of getting home is at four eighteen, and they're getting home sometimes at five fifteen every day. Today, for example, no alert that they're going to be late. Four eighteen is the time they're supposed to get home, four thirty-nine they arrived. I would thought there was supposed to be ten minutes if they're going to be late, we were getting messaging, but their bus route is consistently late on the drop-off. Now, arrival to the school, we have no clue. I do ask my kids if they're late to school. A lot of times, they are, but we have no communication back to us if they are late. I'm looking for answers of why the bus is always late? Is it this particular route? How can they be sitting at the school for an hour? And I know it's other routes, too, sometimes. Of no communication to us to maybe we can go pick them up or anything? Is there any work being made for improving the transportation? I understand there's shortages and things like that. Is there better routing they can do? Any progress being made at all with any of this? And is it just their route, or is this every single route in all the schools? Is it something in particular happening in their route before them? Or just looking for solutions? And also, better communication to the parents that the bus is going to be late or is not at the school? Because there's opportunities for us to maybe go pick them up if we're aware that they're not on the bus sitting for thirty minutes, or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica Quinn Carroll.
Hi, my name is Jessica, and I am also- my child is on his kid's bus. It is bus number eighty-one-ten at Boulder Hill. It is eighty-seven percent of the time that it's late, either in the mornings, or in the afternoons, or both. That particular day that the gentleman chose to address, they were over an hour late. We did not get notification. This has been an ongoing, for me personally, for my family, an ongoing problem for three years. I've been patient three years. I have resorted to doing carpooling with other parents. I spoke last year about this issue. They said, Jessica, hang in, we're hang on, we're going to work on it, we're- Mr. DuVoe, who is the operate- route operation supervisor manager, David DuVoe, he- it took him three months to analyze my kid's bus to tell me that there was nothing that they could do. Last week, my child, they're supposed to be picked up at eight, eighteen in the morning. She got picked up at eight thirty-nine with no supervision because I was trusting that the bus was going to be maybe two, three minutes late, but it was not. So there is my nine-year-old on the side of the road waiting for the bus. This is constant. It is not that it happens just once a week, it is constant. At the school, they already know that if I drive my kid to school, it is because, oh, your bus eighty-one-ten. Yes, I am, my kid is in bus eighty-one-ten. So as a parent of having this issue, my idea or suggestion to the Board is we have to find a solution. Some of those solutions, I've been talking to other districts, CPS does vans, they use CTA vans where- because it's easier to drive a van, so everybody can drive, anybody can drive a van with a regular license versus a bus license. So could we subcontract vans to assist those routes? Our bus has ten pickups. I met with Mr. DuVoe this morning, and he's again looking into this. So that is one option. Another option might be possibly giving the parents a stipend to subsidize or to help with their missing work to then be able to drive their kids to school, or maybe drive others' kids in their neighborhood. My particular neighborhood, my kids are in the dual-language program, there's three families in the whole subdivision that go to Boulder Hill. So if we could work together and if there's incentive for parents to be able to help alleviate some of that issue, we can work. You know, I'm just, let's think outside the box, you know, having a- we're hiring sign or flyers, it's not working. I mean, we've been working on that for three years, and it hasn't worked. As a parent, I am doing my job to bring my child prepared to school, to have her ready to learn, to have her on time. Now I need the school to do that for my child. She is very stressed because in the morning, they are late a lot of the eighty-seven percent of the time. So when they are late, she's already in specials, and the teacher is like, you gotta hurry up, you're already late, you're ten minutes late, you're twelve minutes late, you gotta hurry, 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 hurry. She is like stressed. Three years of rushing her because she's always running behind, because she's always late. It disrupts the classroom, it disrupts everything, it throws- I mean, imagine getting to work late every day. It affects everything. And I am asking the Board to look into different solutions other than just having, we're hiring flyers, and, you know, to look into other neighboring school districts to find out what may be working for them. Or to have a group of us parents that have those kids, and let's brainstorm on how we can help. We are failing our children by setting them already late every day at school, and it's very stressful on the staff, it's stressful on the parents, and especially on the children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point one, we will now have Dr. Calgotti Superintendent report.
Good evening, Board, Community, thank you very much. I want to start my comments this evening by just taking a minute to reflect and request from the Board an opportunity in the community here to take a moment of silence. And why I'm going to ask for this, I want to address the ongoing, longstanding, and increased violence in the Middle East. Every life is precious, and it is heartbreaking to witness the loss of life and lives due to any form of aggression. We hold steadfast in our hope and our desire to live in a world that dignifies the lives of all, in every way, tolerating differences, and more importantly, coexisting in peace. I would like to take a moment of silence in honor of those impacted and extend a most profound hope of prayer and peace for lasting peace for that area of the world. Thank you. And this is something that's been of concern for me as well as for the Board, and so I appreciate this moment. I'm going to pivot, and we'd like to move on to some unique and important celebrations we have within our midst in the district. One of our students, her name is Lucy Weirdo, she's age nine, I'll listen to this, third grader from Southbury, and is among eighty junior golfers representing thirty-one U.S. states and two countries who have earned an invitation to compete at the Augusta National Golf Club for their tenth annual drive. What were you doing when you were ten years of age? This will happen on April since seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Lucy earned first place in each of the three disciplines and scoring a hundred and thirty-two points and registering a thirty-six-point victory. Now, everybody, don't go to that school and get your autograph today, but I can't fault you if you do. This is an incredible achievement for such a great scale deserves special recognition. We send her our best, wish her goodness well. Congratulations to her family, as we know, this is a partnership. Last Friday, our high school students participated in Ascend. This first day, this is the first day of a series of learning and engagement opportunities during the shortened school improvement days. This is using a unique model of having our students participate in their classroom, watching presenters live online, and allowed everyone the opportunity to engage in the same amount of content, but also engage in smaller groups. The topics include goal-setting and dreams, and the importance of community and developing empathy. This idea came from our students who are serving on the Superintendent's Advisory Council, along with teachers and administrators from the high school in the district. This incredible opportunity was a true collaboration and directly addressed topics indicated as priority needs from our student body through survey feedback that we received last year. Congratulations to the team of students and teachers who helped to develop this learning event. We look forward to hearing more about what you plan for our next SIP Day. Thank you all. As many of you may know, today kicks off the tenth annual district-wide food drive. This annual collection or event has a massive impact on our community to help fight hunger and food insecurity. At our recent Education Commission meeting in Aurora, I was there, this was a matter of great concern, that we are looking at how we partner with local organizations. This particular drive benefits our local county community food pantry, who serves over two thousand families every week. We account for the largest single donation each year. While we do make this a friendly competition between buildings at each level, the goal is the same for everyone. We are here to make a difference in our community. When we do all, when we all do a little, it really adds up a lot. And as they say, many hands make light work. We encourage you and welcome you to join us in donating online. We also, through- this is happening through October sixteenth, please join us in breaking our record from last year, which combined with cash and food donations totaled four hundred and thirteen thousand items. Our district alone has provided one point seven million items to our local pantry through this annual collection. This is an amazing impact that we are having, and we always announce this celebration, the winner of this effort at our Crosstown football game. I see some shirts over here for our football Crosstown coming up on October twentieth at It is also this evening with mixed emotion that I want to share the news of the upcoming retirement, and you may have read of two of our long-standing educational leaders, who have really made a profound difference in their time with our district. Now, they will be with us for the rest of the year, but I think it's important to acknowledge and take moment and stock right now. At the conclusion of this year, our Associate Superintendent, Ms. Faith Dalquist, along with our junior high director, Ms. Shannon Lures, will retire from district, from this district following distinguished careers in public education. I think that's worth an applause. Faith has been part of this district for the last five years. She's been an educator in Illinois since nineteen ninety-one, and serving as an administrator for twenty-nine years. This is incredible contribution, and we are grateful for her leadership and dedication, and she most certainly has earned the opportunity to enjoy herself and her family in retirement. Maybe even sub, I'm just kidding. Shannon has spent seventeen years in our district. She's one of the longest-serving administrators here in School District three oh eight. She's in this, she started serving as an assistant principal at Thompson Junior High, then as a principal. Seven years ago, she moved to the district office to oversee all of our junior highs. Her expertise and experience and knowledge will be missed, but like Faith, she more than like, more than well deserves her free time in retirement. We wish both of them all the best, and we celebrate with you, and we will know we will have the time to celebrate more with you as you prepare for this change. My final comments tonight are really about the transformative process we've been going through. It has really been a tremendous experience coming into this district. As we know, any change takes time. We've received questions about programmatic changes, transportation, as we've heard this evening, last meeting, the dual-language program, are the way in which we think about our budget and organizing our finances, and a significant opportunity for improvement in those areas. I recognize that. In my first ninety days, I've been getting to know the district, reviewing the key areas needed, working with educators, parents, and community members, as evidenced through our Superintendent's Advisory Group recently. It is my intention and plan to be as methodical, proactive in the exploration of processes that need to be addressed. I am going to be identifying and working collaboratively to identify opportunities of growth. We'll uncover what is not making our district stronger than it needs to be, and work towards identifying ways to make it a sustainable and as strong a district as possible. We have to work towards continuous improvement. We have to identify ways to identify the root causes, and then work to move through a systematic process to improve what's happening in our district. One of the first things we've identified as a district is the need to improve our climate and culture. And one of the areas that we're doing that is by identifying six core values that will guide our work. These include integrity, humanization, courtesy, dignity, collaboration, and empathy. With these values guiding us, we can operate in a way that is more transparent and builds trust. When we acknowledge the importance of building systems and structure and not just responding and reacting, we can make great things happen. And it's my intention and this administration's intention to work collaboratively with our community and to continue to strengthen it. And with that, I turn it over to Madam President. Thank you. Yes. Actually, I want to share, share the baton with you, and invite, we have enough, we have lots of celebrations, as you noticed, when we come together, so I want to make sure that we have an event, we have a celebration that we're going to-
Yes. So we want to acknowledge Stephanie San Roman. We want to acknowledge Stephanie San Roman. She is one of thirty music teachers to be awarded by the Nashville-based nonprofit Country Music Association. And Oswego High School's band director has been recognized nationally for her commitment and impact on the lives of students. Stephanie San Roman is one of thirty music teachers to be awarded by the Nashville-based nonprofit Country Music Association. It's the seventh year the program has recognized educators make the greatest impact on their students through music, according to a news release. San Roman is the only Illinois educator to earn this year's Music Teacher of Excellence. She joined the Oswego School in two thousand and six as an associate director and was promoted to director three years ago. All thirty award winners will be celebrated at a ceremony that took place on September nineteenth in Nashville. The organization will also give a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to all of this year's recipients. Half of each teacher's investment will go to their classroom needs and music programs, with the other half going to personal expenses, officials said. So congratulations to Stephanie San Roman. Yes, okay. Five point two, Board Committee Reports. And we'll have the report of the Equity and Teaching and Learning Committee. Are there any comments regarding the Equity and Teaching and Learning Committee?
I have one, but I'll, I'll see if you, Eugene or Dr. Murillo, if you wanted to say anything first.
I just have one encouragement for the community. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just have one encouragement for the community. We are looking at these committees as a way to really get more input, both from board members prior, prior to going to a full board meeting, but community members are also welcome at these committees to observe the discussions, listen in, and also make comment as they would like. We had one visitor at our last meeting, and we hope to see more community members in the future.
I agree. Thank you, Dr. Murillo, and I'll, I'll just add a couple, a couple of things that kind of pondering coming out of there. First of all, a large portion of the meeting was to talk about the ASL class, and one thing I want to talk about, we, it's, I guess apropos that we're talking about equity and also teaching and learning when it comes to this program. You know, sometimes in life, you don't know till you know. And my first time on the Board, for those that don't know, one of the reasons I didn't run again is because late in my first term, my wife developed an acoustic neuroma. And my wife, being hard-headed as she is, I, believe me, no pun intended there, she just kind of kept putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, and then it got to a point where they told her immediately, you need to go to the doctor. Matter of fact, doing, doing a simple hearing test, they actually knew exactly what was going on. My wife then had to endure three surgeries, one to take out her left ear, another one to get rid of the, the tumor itself, and then a third one to anchor in the hearing aid piece into her skull. And I will say this, that you don't know till you know, right? And just something simple, as the last time we were on a flight, the person next to her was trying to talk to her on her left side, and she turned and said, I'm sorry, I'm deaf on that side, I can't hear, right? And so when we talk about those in our community who deal with, with hard-of-hearing, hearing loss, so forth, we should realize how many people it impacts, but sure, but we also should remember that there's a huge benefit also to being, accepting, and celebrating that, that, that community that exists with us. And I know my wife was very much motivated to take up sign language herself. She is a foreign language teacher, so probably helped her a little bit, but, but, you know. But these things do impact people, sometimes you don't even, you don't even know. My, tragically, my wife sees out there, sees out there certain things that, that people will say about me, and I feel bad for that part for her, but, you know, I guess it goes with the job. But one concern that I always have is that I hope we are monitoring this committee in particular. This was a moment that I was excited to see equity and teaching and learning come together. I know sometimes people will have a concept of equity, this is equitable, this is, this is equity, this class and what we're doing, but I hope that we will continue to monitor because I don't want that getting lost by combining the two committees. So I just wanted to add that piece, and like I said, I guess the theme there is you don't know sometimes till you know.
I, I would just like to share that I was, as many administrators will share with you that have sat on a committee with me, I'm pretty passionate about things, and I see some smiles across the aisle over there. Last year, I brought ASL to Mr. Arndson and Mrs. Dalquist and at the Teaching and Learning Committee because I am part of that deaf and hard-of-hearing community, I am fully deaf on the right side of my ear, which is why I'm always asking people to talk into the microphones because I can't hear. Masking was hard for me because I'm a lip reader, but I know that there was some hesitation, and I thank you both for seeing this through. and I thank you both for seeing this through over the last year. It means a lot just, not just to me, but to so many in our deaf and hard and, hard and hearing community. I was at the bowling alley a couple of months ago and the family next to me communicated fully in ASL and I just don't think if you don't see it, you don't realize how much it impacts people's lives. So I look forward to our next meeting being in ASL.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Five point three, board member comments. Any board member comments tonight?
I just have, you know, went on a tour with Dr. Calgotti, Ms. Artur and Ms. Jones over at Boulder Hill a couple of weeks ago. I will say that it was, they're very resourceful with their space. There's a lot of space constraints going on, but a lot of vibrant classrooms, excitement in the school, so it was, it was very heartwarming as well. I, I also, that was, that was pretty much all I want to say, I was, had some fun playing Simon Says. It's been years, I did pretty well, I think.
How soon did you go out?
Oh yeah, anybody that, that knows me probably thinks I wouldn't do very well at Simon Says, right? But yeah, so I appreciate taking that tour with me and showing me around and seeing the great things and the things that we need to improve, so.
Okay. So a week ago Saturday, two weeks ago this coming Saturday, I went with a couple admins and several teachers to serve lunch at Hesett House. So for those of you that aren't aware, Hesett House is kind of a, a homeless shelter out, out in Aurora. It's actually a pretty large one. Anyway, it was part of District 308 Gives, so we all gathered and, and we, actually, we got off pretty easy, we were handing out pizza, so it could have been worse, but it was a great experience to, to hang out with some other teachers and also to have some conversations with some people that otherwise you might not be talking to. So that and again, we mentioned the food drive, food pantry was also last week over at Old Trauber. We, you know, virtually a hundred families again. If there is a need, please make sure that you send people there, there's, you know, nobody, nobody in this community should starve. So that's it from me.
You know, can I, so yeah, we got the letter about the food drive, I think recently or an email or some form of communication, but it was for every dollar you give, it's like eight items of food. So I mean, it's, you can make a significant difference with like ten, twenty, two hundred, you know? But even ten or five, you know, still good. But yeah, that was, you know, I, I forget that, how, how well they do with the resources they get, so.
You done? Yeah, no. We're going to move on if you, you have something?
I just have two quick things I wanted to say and I did not prepare these, so God help me. I just wanted to make an apology to our dual-language families and our ELL families. I know that I've spent the last two weeks really getting to know a lot of them and I will tell, say that I was not fully vested in understanding and the knowledge of the program and I thank all of them who have reached out to me and allowed me to listen. I do feel that there are a lot of areas of opportunity in our district and right now it is very high on my priority list. So to the students that we may have let down, I'm really, really sorry and I apologize. And I have spent many conversations with Dr. Calgotti over the last two weeks, really digging in and, and sharing information and really understanding what the root cause of the issues are. So I just really wanted to reach out and, and say that to everyone involved and I know that there is better days ahead for that program. That was the first thing. And then secondly, I just wanted to bring awareness to the fact that October is ADHD Awareness Month, also incredibly personal to me as I have been, I was diagnosed with ADHD when I was twenty-six, but looking back on my history, I've obviously had it for most of my whole life. And I encourage, and I shared with Dr. Calgotti some resources, but I strongly encourage our administrators to look into professional development regarding ADHD. It affects a lot of students and as we know, when students are dysregulated, they are not learning. And most people that have worked with me, including everybody at this table, know that I, I have trouble with executive functions. I see it in students every day. A lot of the times, we label that as behavior issues and they're not behavior issues, they are executive function impairment. And I look forward to seeing the district dig into that and the professional development and getting to understand our students and where they're coming from because we know that they're not learning if they're dysregulated. When I was in second grade, my teacher decided to duct tape my mouth shut for the first semester of, of school. Now I did go to a parochial school, so things were a little different on the private side of things, but I was so scared that my parents were going to find out and you can't really hide a rash from duct tape after so long. And it just goes to show that, you know, those kids that we think talk too much or distract or what have you, have a lot of other things going on and it's really important for us to find out what those things are so we can help them in their learning journey. So I just wanted to thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Dr. Calgotti?
I want to close it out, I want to invite Faith Dahlquist to join me and we're getting ready to celebrate a very important group of our employees this month, so Faith.
I don't know if you're aware of it, but it is Principal Appreciation Month. These group of individuals work incredibly hard. I know people even in June, July and August, wouldn't you love to be a principal? No, you would not. There's a lot, a lot of work to do to be ready for everybody to come. I know some of my favorite years were being a principal and, wow, I'm not going to get emotional about that. And it's just a great job, but it's also very, very tiring and trying to meet the needs of, of everybody and I am just honored to work with our principals.
Thank you, thank you. Let's give them. We will be sharing a lot more about our principals at our, our second board meeting in the month of October. We will be kicking off, next week is the official week where we have lots and lots of ways that we're going to be taking time to celebrate them every single day. And then at our last board meeting of the month, we'll be bringing some more announcements and celebrations around that.
It's one other, as long as we're going through this, it is also LGBTQIA+ History Month. I always talk about the story of Albert Cashier. I don't know if anyone knows this story, but Albert Cashier served Illinois in the Civil War, marched under Grant's army, came over from Ireland and was born, 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 born a woman, but the father of Albert, when she came over, he encouraged Albert to, to present and work as a man because there would be more opportunities and Albert joined the Union Army, served. The state of, state of Illinois was almost captured, went through many heroic moments when Albert came back. Unfortunately, there was a moment where Albert became foggy in the head, for lack of a better term, started to suffer from dementia and had to be in, was hit by a car. And at that point, the doctors realized that Albert, Albert, in their minds was not, in their minds was not a male, threatened to take Albert's pension away after defending his country and his own soldiers that he served with showed up and they said, Albert, Albert deserves his pension, Albert is one of us, Albert is a soldier here for Illinois. And so I always tell the story of Albert Cashier.
Albert Cashier.
Yeah. So look it up, you can fact check me, I always tell people to fact check me, so please do.
Thank you for that. All right. And now we have five point four, student ambassador reports.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, a little louder.
Okay, so we have had some very productive discussions since our last school board meeting. Throughout our SSAC meetings, we have really been focusing on the survey results from the mental health survey that was released last year. We were really able to dive deep into the demographics that made up the results, especially we looked where race and gender intersected with kind of how students looked at issues. The main result of the survey that really stood out to us was how students of every demographic, of every race, of every sexuality stated that they had too large of a homework load and that was one of their biggest concerns. So we're really trying to kind of get to the root of that and understand what subjects are weighing on students the most, what, what might just be not wanting to do work and what might be a serious issue because that, it, it can become serious if students are spending their whole night at home doing homework. And then we kind of talked about students, solutions that help students relieve stress while still allowing them to learn. We would really love to survey teachers next to get their perspective on the homework load and how we can possibly connect teachers to each other. So you know, if one, one subject is having a big test and a lot of homework, the other subject isn't doing the same thing because I think that's a lot of issues we see where every single class has a test on one day and then you have no homework for a week. So that's something we'd like to try to confront. We also discussed how the survey stated the majority of students did not believe that sexual harassment had gone down in their community, which combating sexual harassment had been our goal the previous year. So we tried to address the failings and successes of last year's actions and how we can prove the, the attempts that were made. And the biggest thing was we really tried to acknowledge how large of an issue sexual harassment is and how we can address it, knowing that we can't change society as a whole at the moment. And one small way we discussed was even letting students know the process for addressing harassment within the district because we heard from admin that many times students believed there was no discipline or no action taken against a student that was accused when in fact they're bound by confidentiality, but students don't always know that. So we really wanted to work together to educate students so they feel heard and understood and understand the process. But overall, we are still in the process of weeding through survey results and creating an action plan for this year. I also just wanted to speak to students directly, I wanted to speak on what is going on in the Middle East right now. So to fully represent student voice, I'm not going to share my personal opinions because that's not what this forum is for, but I wanted to speak to all people affected, Jews, Muslims, Palestinians and Israelis alike are really struggling and hurting right now. It's, no one wants to see people they know die or people in their communities die. So I wanted to remind all students that their feelings are valid and understandable. You don't have to know everything or have a fully formed opinion and there is support if you're struggling. To speak personally, I'm Jewish and I spent much of this weekend in temple discussing the issue. I've talked to my youth group and the biggest thing is people don't know how to feel. It's a complex issue and I think we need to understand that, but also understand feelings are valid. You don't want to watch people in your community die, you don't want to watch people die. So this morning, I was able to talk with Principal Bankowski about how to best support students and she reiterated that administration is here for us, no matter our connection to the conflict, no matter what side we're on. And may all the memories of the dead be a blessing and may that region soon find peace.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to both of you, Luke and Isabelle. All right. Six point one, the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please, if there are no questions?
Make, make a motion to approve all items under consent, including minutes of the Board of Education meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, open and closed session, minutes of the Board of Education meeting on September twenty-eighth, open and closed session, and to acknowledge the FOIA requests received by the district.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Dr. Murillo?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Mr. Clover?
Aye.
Ms. Vettman?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. This evening, I want to, regarding financial statements and the investment schedule, are there any questions from the board on this item?
You know, if you can walk me through the master total portfolio report and what it's telling me, what, what, you know, what are the takeaways that I should be getting from this report?
What it is here.
Can you pull the mic closer, Rafael?
What we are showing is the, the amount of money that we have in investment in the district for the month of October.
So it's just, just in overnight investment, you know?
Yes.
That, that's, okay, so not, not our capital expenditure?
No, no, no. This are, yeah.
Okay, and, okay, so these are just generally interest-bearing bank accounts?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have.
Other questions? Anybody else? No? Okay. Seven point, seven point two, I'm going to invite Dan Artson, our executive director for high schools and for assessment. And he will be, I'm going to invite Faith Dahlquist, our associate superintendent also, to speak to any questions you may have.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It brings me great pleasure here to, to bring this course to proposal to you guys tonight. So what I'd like to do is really just talk through this course a little bit, answer any questions you may have, as you saw by public comment tonight and some comments from board members. This is something that's of tremendous value to us as a school district in our community. So what we're proposing tonight is American Sign Language I, that would be rolled out in school year twenty-five, which would be next school year, and then the following school year would be ASL II. And those numbers next to that are the Illinois State course codes that would be coordinating with that or correlating to that. So those are just there. There's actually courses one through five in the Illinois State course code, so our plan moving forward would be to bring ASL III and IV to the school board next year for approval. Really, this class, as we talked about last, last week in ETL, has tremendous value in lots of different ways. Some of the things, and there were great, great questions by board members last week about the course. One of the things we did change on here was a course fee. Initially, we had twenty-five dollars on there, which is, would, would keep it comparable to the other world language courses that we have for, like Spanish, one has that. Largely, those are for consumables, things of that nature, but we want to get a better handle of what that twenty-five dollar course fee really would be. Of course, as we move forward, we will put that in the course catalog that could, could very well be no course fee whatsoever, it could be twenty-five dollars, it could be ten. So once we have that definitive finger, figure, we will let you guys know for that. Beyond that, as I said, as we talked about last week in, in ETL, lots of great questions. We have, this course again has tremendous value to our students. It's a course that has been brought up over the course of the last few years in lots of different ways, but again, we think it has tremendous value for our students here in Oswego and we look forward to having it. The next slide, this is the tentative timeline for course selection. Of course, we're here tonight presenting for information. As we go to the next board meeting would be for action. After that, it's a pretty quick, pretty quick turnaround for some things here, getting into the course catalog and then of course, as we go through there with teacher recommendations all the way through student course requests and the timeline all the way down to the very bottom, which will be February sixteenth right now for course selections to be finalized for next school year. There's a lot that happens within that window of time, really as soon as October twenty-fifth, the action takes place, course catalog being made public, things of that nature. There's a, again, it's a tight window for lots of things to happen, but we've done this before and, you know, we've adjusted the timeline just a little bit to the left this year, giving our student services department a little bit more time, our counselors to work with students. One of the things we hear each and every year- our counselors to work with students. One of the things we hear each and every year is, we have three thousand students at each high school, uh, and it's very difficult for everyone to get the appropriate amount of time with our students to talk about this. So we've provided about an extra ten days for student services to meet with students, which is huge. Um, that gives counselors more time, it gives our students more time with counselors. So that's something we've tried to do this year, which makes our scheduling a little bit tighter, but at the same time, it's going to be a lot more valuable to our students. Do you have any questions?
I'm, I do. And I, I'm, um, sorry, I didn't give him, submit these.
Sure, no problem.
This was a very busy, uh, few days. I think we got it Friday or something.
Sure.
How many districts are in, in the area are offering ASL, you know, to, um, as a high school course?
Yeah, there's quite a few, actually. Plainfield, Yorkville, uh, we do have a running list here. Our surrounding communities do, this is pretty much the norm to offer this.
Okay.
So this is, it wouldn't be something out of the ordinary.
Okay, I kind of was hoping that we were leading, leading on something here.
Unfortunately, we are not.
Catching up.
We're catching up.
We are seventh largest district, so I think that puts us at the top.
It's also offered at Harvard, so, I mean, it's pretty common, all the way from, it's offered in many, I would say junior highs through college, so.
Yeah, I, um, I also just, I, that, this is just a comment, I see this as a, um, kind of, uh, helps in that teacher pipeline that we're trying to develop. This gives, you know, our students unique skills to support future students in probably areas that are hard to hire for. Um, so I, I, I see that as, um, kind of complementing that. And, uh, so I appreciate it. I'm not on that committee, so thank you.
Well, and I also, yeah, to your point too, I, I want to remind us that, um, it sends the correct message. Well, I don't want to say the correct message, but it sends a correct message to, um, our community, because we do bring in students from other communities for our, um, DHH program and, and the, um, uh, lower levels. And so, um, it's kind of, I don't want to say strange, but it, it, I think it's, um, a mixed message to not have this, but then to have, um, those, uh, students filtering in from other, uh, communities that we service. So I think it sends the right message, for sure.
Yeah, and I, and I think it'll help, it'll help our deaf and hard of hearing students.
Exactly.
When they have people that can communicate with them that aren't, um, and, you know, it's,
And that was brought up in commi- a committee. We brought that up in committee.
There's so many benefits.
Yeah.
I really appreciate the committee talking about, um, how courses are vetted and, and refining that process. I'm very glad to hear that. Um, but there were two other courses that were proposed. I just wonder what is hap- do we talk about this? What is happening to those?
Yeah, there were actually three other courses that were initially proposed. So, uh, those will go back into our process that we're developing.
Okay.
Uh, and those, those courses and individuals who worked in those courses spend a tremendous amount of time and effort on those courses. Uh, I've already communicated that with them about what we plan moving forward with those courses, and those will kind of automatically be part of the, the process moving forward. Um, this course in particular was just something that we felt, um, had the absolute, uh, need in every capacity to move forward, uh, to talk about as a group last week in ETL. Um, but those courses, again, people put a lot of effort and time.
That was really where, what I wanted to address was that going back to culture and climate and our goals, you know, they bring, the teachers bring these to you because they're passionate about something, so we don't want to lose sight of that. I, I just want to make sure that those are back on the docket at some point.
Absolutely.
Faith wanted to add something.
I actually think Dan said it better.
Amy?
Yes, um, thank you. So just a couple of, just a couple of things I'd like to add. Um, one, I want to, I want to give an appreciation to the administration for bringing, um, this recommendation back to the teaching, Equity and Teaching and Learning Committee. I think that's a good process. I will continue before it goes between, before the whole board. Um, I'm glad to hear that there will be a quick proposal for an additional two years, considering that all of our other language courses have a four-year program. I think that's a great move. Um, you know, continuing on as successful along the first year. Um, I think that is appropriate. Um, I also mentioned this in our meeting, but we're going to point for the board, um, that we are clear with our students in the course selection process about which schools and universities accept this as a foreign language credit, uh, just so that they can plan accordingly. More and more universities and colleges are accepting this as a foreign language credit, but it's not as widely accepted as, you know, like Spanish or other languages. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to say was I know that a change has been made on the in regard to the course fee, and I appreciate that, considering we don't know exactly, you know, what those consumables might be. I would just say that if it is way, if we end up choosing some sort of continual or program or an application of some sort that puts this out of line with other courses and course fees, that the board would know about that, so it's not a surprise to, to be involved in the course.
I believe we have to approve it, right?
No. No. It wouldn't be here back at the board meeting. It is public knowledge of what the fees would be, eventually, but we're not looking to raise it past that. We just wanted to be able to give details. We even had the slide written as twenty dollars or less at one point, so.
Yep, and that's fair, right? I, I, as soon as we,
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, we will absolutely make sure everyone's aware of that, and to, again, that we're not trying to hide anything from anyone, especially our, our, um, our students and things.
And, and from the committee, I thought there was a really good conversation that came about, you know, um, it, it's a, it's a difficult one, it's a tough one to navigate through, but at the end of the day, like, um, what, what do we, what do we do with some courses that we have that have dropped to a certain level? And that, that's tough, because I think, I, I believe anyways, we want to offer our students as many options as we can, as we can give them. At the same time that, you know, one of the conversations that came up in the committee was, what does that look like? What is the balance, right? Do you run a class with only two students, right? Um, I mean, obviously, if, if you, if you, if you, um, have to, right, that, that's, you know, there's some have, have tos, if you will, but, um, that's a conversation that at some point, like, you know, we will have to talk about and think about, because it's not just a matter of, oh, you add a class and it has no impact. And I'm not talking about this class in particular, I'm talking about the, the larger conversation among the committee. Um, and so we do have to be cognizant of that and to speak to the point about why we maybe, uh, took those other three classes back to take a look. Um, there's a point where we, if we, if we add too much, we will reach saturation, if that makes sense. And, and so we'll have to have those discussions. They're not going to be easy either. I think they'll be more difficult than people realize, because are you going to offer a class for two students, one at both, if one is at each school, right, and how does, what does that look like?
And we also added, if you, if we do decide to have to sunset any class, that we just give the students and administration time to make that decision.
Jared and Eugene, both of you, thank you for bringing that up. I think that was another important conversation. Um, with any concern, I think the question should always be, if students are taking this course, what course are they not taking? And that should be part of the proposal process as well.
Any other questions? Just thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have any que- and Luke, I just saw your face for a second.
I'll just say real quick, um, I was able to, uh, during homecoming week, I'm in a cappella choir, and at our pep assembly, we were able to have the ASL club actually, um, sign the Star Spangled Banner along with us. And, um, just seeing that, like, the amount of support that's in there, um, from the community and just overall with the students, I think I just, I can see that students are very excited about this opportunity. And just, um, having that opportunity to experience that, you know, working with choir, it was just really beautiful to see, and I'm excited to see this going forward.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Luke, that was awesome. I want to also share that at talk training, where we have other districts come in and learn about our talk program, we had two sign language interpreters there as well. And all I thought was, this is beautiful, but it's tiring to do that for an entire day.
I can imagine, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seven point three, update on change orders for the track construction. I want to invite, uh, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Bill Queen and Mr. Obafemi. Good evening.
Good evening, board. All right, so we'll start with change orders. Change orders one through ten have been completed with the exception of the installation of the takeoff boards, sand delivery for the long jump, installation of concrete pads, vault boxes for pole vault, and to raise the storm inlet rims around the football field at OEHS. Change orders eight, twelve, fourteen, and fifteen, we are currently soliciting, uh, competitive bids. Uh, with competitive bidding, these items may cost, may be a lower cost of work. Items twelve, fourteen, and fifteen are scheduled to be completed the summer of twenty twenty-four, along with the installation of the rubber track surface, which is already included into the project.
What was that date? I'm sorry, what was that date again?
And which track? Sorry.
At, this is at O H eight twenty-four. So the track surface will already be included at that, so that's twenty twenty-four for OEHS. Rubber playing surface, OE. This process was started Monday, ten nine yesterday at OE. The plan is to complete the oval for practicing purposes and relocate to OHS for competitions. It is anticipated the rubber installation will be completed over a three-day period of time without rain, temperatures above fifty degrees, potentially October twentieth. Also during this timeframe, shoulder asphalt will be completing. The outstanding work noted in change orders one through ten. Moving on to O H. Upon completion of the oval at OEHS, Midwest Track Builders will relocate to O H to lay the rubber on the oval and all the jump pits in order for the district to have a functioning track for, for the start of track and field, where both schools will utilize for meets. And it is anticipated the rubber installation will be completed over a five-day period over a time without rain and temperatures above fifty degrees, potentially October twenty-seventh. Prior to the installation of rubber, shoulder asphalt will be installing the long jump, takeoff boards, pole vault boxes during the week of October sixteenth. That concludes my track update.
There was, there was something that kind of confused me. Can you go back to the beginning, Phil, just at the start, you talked about something for twenty twenty-four. I wasn't sure what that was. The, the, the sound cut out.
The sound cut out?
Yeah.
So the completion of that work will commence in the summer of twenty twenty-four.
Which with what?
OEHS, that's with the track, with the jumps, the rubber will be late.
The jumps part, not the track.
The track oval will be completed. They've started that yesterday, they worked on it today. Hopefully that rain holds off tomorrow night, we can get some rubber on that track.
And is that where you said that for those competitions will happen at OHS?
OHS.
For jumping, was it, uh, long jump and which, we, just, I'm just trying to specify. Which sports are going to be?
That would be the long jump, pole vault.
Got it.
All that good stuff.
So the ones that were going up for additional RFPs, those are related, or what?
They are related. That, that's work, right? We're, we're into this thing pretty far with the contractor, and, and we would like to see some other numbers to, to get that cost lower.
For the long jumps.
For the long jumps, absolutely, at OEHS. I'm sorry.
That's great news. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I guess to kind of add to what Mr. Quinn is saying, we've had some issues with the asphalt vendor. The vendor's not been as responsive as we would like for them to be. And I guess, um, because of the existing, um, bid that we had with them, they kind of thought they had us by the barrel, and they have not been as responsive and they have not been as flexible. So we think this will be an opportunity for us to go out back into the marketplace and contact other possible provider to see if we can get better pricing than what has been provided to us for the work that we can do until this.
Okay, okay.
So I guess I have a couple of questions. Question one is, I have, sorry, screen. Um, question one is, um, have we been, uh, actually, I'll, I'll start with this. So I'm assuming that means OE is not going to be able to have any kind of home meets next year. And if I'm, if I'm making that assumption incorrect, then you can let me know. But if that is correct, have we sat down and talked with coaching staff with, with what, what that's going to look like for them? Because I, I will be honest, morale is, 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 is a concern for me. And then I have one question for Maureen, but you go ahead.
You are correct. And I guess we have sat down with administration and, and gone over that with all parties involved.
I'm, I'm glad that we've talked to, I, I just really want to make sure that we are getting feedback from the coaches, we're talking to the coaches, um, we're doing whatever we can with those coaches.
Mr. Bloger, I'm, I'm speaking with Tony every day. I'm speaking with Darren every day.
Okay.
Um, I wake up in the morning and I'm calling these contractors for a thing at Fort Twenty, just to make sure I know where they're at.
Okay.
The next call is to those, those administrators, those athletic directors, just to make sure we're on, staying on top of anything that could change or has changed in the future. So we, we are communicating, probably, I would, I wouldn't say over communicating, but we are communicating a bunch with these administrators, absolutely.
Okay, and I hope the administrators then are, are communicating with their coaches. And then, um, Maureen, just, you know what question I'm going to ask. I'll ask it again, I asked last meeting, so uh, is there anything that we have done incorrectly in this process, um, to, at, at this, other than obviously, I'm just going to speak bluntly, other than going off of plans that were old, but that's something, that's, that's another issue.
I mean, my understanding is what came to light and when it came to light, other than these things that are going to be postponed, what has to get done has to get done now because of the timing before the winter, so that it's available for use in the spring. Um, and therefore, I, I think you're ratifying, uh, those change orders, deeming them as an, an emergency.
Thank you.
I'm, I think I'm still, so Jared's first question, something about OE not being able to have, not having this for their next season is, did I, what did I hear?
OE will be practicing on the facilities, but they will not hold meets here at OEHS.
For, for any of the track, field, track and fielders? Is this just for?
Correct.
Okay.
We will hold all meets at OHS for both schools.
Okay.
They'll have access for practice, but not for the meet itself, because they need all the events.
The jump pits, and that's absolutely.
Okay, that's why, okay.
And I'm going to assume, I could be wrong, but I'm assuming this question's going to come up, which will be, well then, why not just hold off? I'm going to assume, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason why we don't hold off for the whole thing, and we deem it as Maureen said, is because then what you're looking at is one of two options, right? You either tell OE they don't have a track season at all next year, or you're busing them every single day somehow with our, with our already fragile transportation system to O H and back, potentially every single day for practice. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and make that assumption, but you can correct me if I'm wrong.
You're absolutely right. And the other variable that we thought about in making the decision is the fact that not only will we have to provide transportation, then we put our, our students at risk of trying to drive to, uh, drive from OE to O H. And, um, and just the, uh, the possibility of traffic incidents with all that, we're just trying to do everything we can to lessen any complication related to that by moving forward.
Hopefully, hopefully everybody realizes the, uh, current traffic situation, I guess, yeah.
That's another story in itself. Those, those, those tracks were bad. Those tracks were real bad.
What do you mean by that? Because I was not here.
So, just to give you a little background, what you've seen in some of those, those changeovers were undercut, right? And that, that's when you go into the ground.
What's an undercut?
Undercut is, is the process of removing an element or soil, something that's in the dirt, to put something back that is compactable and foundation proof. Um, when these tracks were built for us twenty, fifteen, twenty years ago, no under drains were ever put in. We, we opened the ground up, there's no drainage, um, which totally tells you where we're at with, with these, with these tracks and, and how they didn't last and, and what was not done. So there was a lot of extra work involved into that process. Somebody got over on us years ago, and it was very, very important that things went right this time around, so right this time around, so we got it right as a district and, and didn't have this problem. We would love to be in a situation where we're just running routines, right? Where we're just pulling the rubber off and putting new rubber down. That is less, less evasive on, on, on the building, on the sport, and on the district itself. We weren't there. And both tracks were so far gone, OE would have not had a track season at all and OH probably would have came up mid-season.
So just to clarify, when, the things that we discovered as we were attempting to replace it, is that what happened? We discovered the improper drainage, which, which caused us to have to go further?
We did, and, and you're going to see that one change order, which is a big one, and that one chewed up every bit of my contingency that I had, but it had to be done at the time that it was done and found in July to keep that project going.
Got it. And, and are you saying that that's what contributed to the now delay?
No, that, that is not all of it, absolutely not.
Got it.
It's, it's a combination of things. What Mr. Queen just mentioned is a big chunk of it. The other big chunk of it, as we mentioned in the last meeting, is that we did not engage the final user the way we should have. And the decision was made to go ahead with the project without recognizing the expertise of the folks who are going to use it and the staff who are going to work with the students to use it. So construction started based on theoretical design without actually taking the folks who are going to be using it to the field and say, this is what we envisioned to do. I mean, does this make sense from a user point of view? We skipped that process, quite frankly. So it was a combination of underlying issues with the, with the way the, the ground was, was prepared and the, the replacement track wasn't done, the replaced track wasn't put in properly. That was one. The other part is that the, the project to replace the, the track wasn't done with the engagement of the final user. So there were two things.
And us, us as well, to add to that too, we're, it's an anomaly. We're, we're trying to take a square block and fit it in a round hole. These football, these are football fields and, and the things that we're trying to add don't, don't equate to the football field that, the way we're standard with, with standard turf. You know, we run off a crown, right? That crown does everything on that football field. Most of these track facilities are flat. They're turf, they're flat, and I'm not politic for turf. I'm just telling you what we're dealing with when we are trying to put this together on a football field.
No, but it's, it's, it's a valid point to bring up because I think this came up, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, in the discussion piece, which is, you know, this is, these are the things that, in the, for the sake of saving money, it costs us money. And I'm not trying to sell us on turf either, but I'm sure that if we did a, you know, cost analysis, we're going to figure out that that's actually cheaper long haul than doing what we're doing.
And we're going to make some money.
Right. And so the, the question, the problem becomes coming up with the front-end capital for that. And, and listen, I understand, I understand people's frustrations, I, I have them too, right? Like, I, I don't even want to bring up the word parking lot, but like, those are things, those are things that if we don't build up enough to, 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 to invest in something to save us money, then, then we are costing us money in the long run. And it's, it's hard, it's not an easy discussion to have, I get it.
But I think that is where this particular board, at this particular moment in time, finds themselves is passports or afraid to look to the future and say, we need to spend money in order to make some decisions that need to be made.
I don't, I don't, I, I think at times, yes, I can, I can remember a few boards that were like that, yes. So I'll concede that. But I also think there were a few boards that had nothing left, right? So there was, there was.
But that's what I mean, at this point in time, what does that discussion look like? Because when Dr. Sparling was here, he and I sat down and I wanted to understand what turf costs and why, why we didn't have turf fields and why we didn't have all of these community football leagues feeding into our high schools and where all that was, what was happening. And so it is one of those things where we have to start to have those discussions, which is, here's how much it costs to maintain our current field, grass field, and what is required to have a grass field because it does, there are so many things that people don't understand. And that costs money incrementally over time. Or do we look forward and say we make an investment that we would have to then pay for, you know, over time? I'm just saying, we need to have those hard discussions and not shy away from them.
I agree.
I, I a hundred percent agree with you. One of the first triple I's that I went to former President Banks and I, we sat down, we listened to the, to the, to the whole pitch from one of these, you know, places that will install turf. We came back and talked to the board and it, it made sense. It made sense. The problem was, we were also, at the time, having a conversation about how much money we needed to cut from the budget. And so I'm just going to be blunt, selling to the general public, hey, I am contemplating increasing third grade class sizes, right? That is still affecting us.
But hey, let's build a turf field.
But I'm going to put in a million dollar turf field. It's not probably two because you have two turf. It, it, it was an impossible sell. Those conversations have happened. It's, the part that's difficult is getting everyone to, to then get to the point of realizing, okay, this is caught, our, our inadequacies are costing us money.
Yes.
Right? And, and that the effects of all that are still happening, they're still here. So when we hear from multiple schools about like third grade class sizes, those are legit, those are, those are legitimate, like, yes, I share your concern, but they are still the effects of what was happening in the past. And so that's why I say that cost piece, I'm glad we're having the conversation. But that's a cost, like, that's a cost to our district that's still occurring today.
Yeah. And I just, I want to say, and again, it's not specific, it is, it's arising because of the specific discussion, but again, I would ask Dr. Kilgotti, you and your administration, while I very clearly know that the board belongs in the balcony, I think for the board and for our taxpayers and our community, it would be for transparency reasons, very helpful to see what your staff is putting in place regarding process, regarding these type of projects and just kind of showing us where the changes are made so that we have a level of confidence moving forward.
No, I appreciate that and I don't know if you want to speak to that. Eugene's had his hand up for a minute.
No, it's all right, keep going.
Now, the, the one thing.
I'm going to add it in though before we end, but you can go.
One thing I wanted to ask the board, since we were talking about this, we know money's always an issue. Will the board be open to looking at sponsorship as a way to complete some of these projects? And that will be, you know, talking to a third party, maybe with naming rights, that will pay for an elaborate field that wouldn't cost taxpayers money, but it would involve maybe having a business, an entity's name on the tough field as an alternative way to have a taxpayer share the, bear the burden of that. If that's something that the board would be interested in, that's something we can look into as a way to subsidize the cost of projects like that, that are sports related. We know the marketplace is more amenable to providing sponsorship for sports. They won't do the same thing for reduction of third grade classes, but we know we can, those are options that we can look at if it's something the board would be interested in.
I think we, we, we kind of do that, right? We, we had this conversation before with the, you know, the new.
Scoreboard.
Scoreboards and things along those lines, but, you know, if we wanted to expand our, I would want it to go through a committee, put it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the one other thing that I would add, just in regards to having the conversation, I appreciate all the work that was done in order to make sure that the tracks were safe. And, and the same consideration I would ask that we do as we start to, because I know we've made some changes with, with the design so that whatever the prep work was needed, we did that or approved that so that if we decided to do turf later, that it was, it was in place. But I would also ask that as we're doing our research, still can, continue to consider the safety of the kids because there's new significant research that talks about the safety of kids when playing on turf versus grass. And so I just want us to make sure that we're considering the safety of the kids as well and not just go the cheaper route with turf when, you know, I'm looking at an article right here that says 58%, there's a, athletes are found 58% more likely to sustain injury during athletic activities on artificial turf. So I just want to make sure that we're considering it when we're thinking about.
Anything.
Anything.
Well, that'll be part of our process. So I think to your point, Jen, regarding thinking about a process, safety is one of the criteria we wanted to think about in any of our contracted process, right? So that's one, so I just, I think that's important. So thank you for bringing up that research.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
And yes, Mr. Obafemi, we would want to, any burden we can reduce on our taxpayers. Now, if you brought us Frito Lay versus Johnny Walker, I mean, I think we have decisions to make, but I think we want to investigate any possible opportunities to.
Johnny Walker Blue.
Marlboro.
I'm not trying Johnny Walker, Marlboro.
I don't know.
The Marlboro man sponsors.
Jeez.
We would want to reduce any opportunities to passing it along to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
We need to have another discussion and I don't think tonight's the discussion, but Jared, you kind of tipped the edge towards equity, like, well, we really need to build two. A lot of what I have learned recently in the community is, sorry, Mr. Queen, is that in the past, Mr. Pickarol offered to build a turf field at OHS. We said no because you have to build both. I think we need to have really open, transparent conversations about what equity looks like. A lot of people in our community always say, well, equity and well, equity, that's a quality, having, having a turf field at both, having a very fancy pool at one versus the other. We have to look at our district as a whole and what benefits our entire student population. And I just want to make sure that when we talk about equity, we're talking about it and all using the same common language.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking about District 300, they just endorsed a master facility plan to get started in the next year or two, but that's going to cost a significant amount of money to really be able to review. So has, when was the last time the district has done a master facility plan?
So I thought we did one, but.
We did.
From what you said, our.
Comprehensive one?
What's the name of the architect that brought us that comprehensive plan?
Yeah, we have one.
We have one?
Kluber.
Kluber did a.
That was not?
No, that's not a master facility plan, that's just an envision. What they did was a record of repairs.
A record of repairs?
Yeah. A facility, a record of repairs on the state of the facility. Master facility plan is more, is more detailed than that. It envisioned future use of buildings. It, it thinks about the educational use of the building, the square footage, it's much more detailed than the facility repairs that was included in the envision 308. And I've actually had a conversation with them and they, they acknowledged that what they did was in a master facility plan. We met with them last week. And that was, and we talked about in the future, maybe putting money in the budget for them to do a master facility plan. It's much more detailed than what they did.
Common language.
Yeah, we have some, some pressing needs and so.
So I'm only raising that as we think about these issues versus turf versus we can't look at these things in isolation.
Yes.
While, if there are wealthy benefactors who are interested in naming rights for both stadiums, we are open to that, it sounds like, from the board, so. Thank you, Mr. Queen.
Please contact A. Kilgotti at sd308.org.
On that end, I want to move to item number 7.4, new IASB resolutions. We will have a short discussion on the five resolutions before us. Mr. Plogar will be voting on behalf of the board, of the, of the board at the Delegate Assembly in Chicago during the triple I conference this year.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so one of the things that I'd like to start off of this is first of all, thank you to the board because I think this, you know, sometimes we'll hear, oh, you're not transparent, we don't know what's going on. This is definitely us being transparent. I will tell you that not all school boards do what we're about to do. And what we're about to do is also part of that education process for the community because it's a window into what is happening around the state, not just here. And as I always like to say, hey, if these are things that, oh, we jump out at us and we can relate to, that means we have a problem at the state level. If they're things that are foreign to us, we don't know, it helps us understand what's going on in other districts, but perhaps at that point, they're either unique to that district or a few districts, or at least not applicable to us. And so as an example to this, the first resolution, it says industrial construction, knowing where this is coming from actually makes a lot of sense. It's coming from Pleasantale. I'll try not to get too personal, but Pleasantale is near, near Willowbrook. And Willowbrook was where we had the Sterigenics piece a few years back. There was a high rate of cancer. I will tell you as a personal note that my oldest brother lived within a half a mile of Sterigenics and my brother is no longer here. He had cancer, a very rare form of cancer. So I say this because it explains kind of where this is coming from, from Pleasantale. And it says, the resolution says, be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and encourage legislation that prohibits the construction of industrial facilities near schools. I've given you some background of kind of where the school district that, you know, proposed this is probably coming from. The recommendation from IASB is to not recommend. Why? So there's got to be some kind of reason and their reason basically is local control and small communities best know what to do, but on top of that, some of them are only able to build near schools. So you have to also consider the small town aspect, right? So if you're a small town, you're surrounded by a bunch of cornfields, soybean fields, I grew up in one of those small towns, right? It's very difficult sometimes to build in, in any kind of industry in some of these small towns that are already hurting unless you're putting them near schools. I am not telling you that means that's the way you should go, I'm just trying to give context to this. So what we need to decide is how you want me to march in there and vote on this, on this particular resolution.
Individual votes like you did before and majority is how votes.
And the majority will.
And we're going to post those on the website.
And, and I don't know that we necessarily have to give, you know, to, to determine what our vote is right now, but that vote will be publicized.
We, we have to make sure of two things. One, I know what I'm voting for when I march in and in my, in my adamant opinion, the public know where we stand.
Yep.
And obviously there's a timeline that it happened before triple I conference.
Right.
I'm fine with.
No, so I think let's, let's make sure we're all on the same page when it comes to the process. So we know that when we submit our form to you and to Ursula, it will have our individual preferences, our selection, right? Yes or no? Those, both of those will be publicized, right? Our individual vote and our, and then our collective vote? So it's not like we have to come back before this body to say, oh, I vote yes or no, or do you guys want to come back before this body? Because it's going to be public anyway. So what would you like to do? Because we don't have to vote today as to how you want to go about it.
I think publicly we should at least vote and then just announce the vote.
And, and I came here prepared to vote. I don't know if everybody did, but.
Yeah, some, I mean, I don't think we're going to be voting today.
Okay, because this isn't like something that, you know, your traditional.
Right. But who all wants to come?
Making decisions, we're just talking about how we're going to vote at this meeting.
Yeah, who all wants to come back before the, the, the actual meeting on November, whatever it is?
I, I'd like to propose that we just, we, we vote on this out in front at the next meeting, at the next meeting so that people are prepared.
Just, just an agenda item.
Are we all in agreement with that? As an agenda item, we come back and vote.
Yeah, we don't have to have a discussion on everything.
No, we don't have to have a discussion because we're having it right now.
I'm just giving background because I was asked to give background.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, yeah, no. I'm saying the next meeting.
So you're going to pass those out to us so we'll have those before we go home tonight? Yes, let's, let's do that.
Should be an easy sheet too.
Yeah.
So you want me to get a resolution to, resolution?
What, does anyone have any thoughts or comments on resolution number one? Nope? Okay.
Well, yeah, without voting. I mean.
Go ahead.
The one, the one thing was basically, you know, this probably should go in front of the EPA. So, and, and part of the other thing with the IASB is that they've, they've had discussions about this, they've thought about these things. So they bring a sort of an expert. So they bring a sort of an expertise into what, how they're, why they're saying adopt or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't just, I don't agree fully with that, Dominic. I do, I do agree that I don't think they just make a decision out of anywhere. But I do think that we need to realize there are differences, right? There's a difference between whether you're in a small town, whether you're in the city of Chicago, whether you're in the suburbs, whether those suburbs are affluent, whether those small towns are affluent. All those things factor into different types of, um, approaches to this. Whether your district is a unified district or a K through eight district or a high school.
None of those things I said, though. I was just basically saying that they already came together and discussed this.
Right, but, okay, so as I understand it, each of those regions have a, have a discussion, right? Each of the.
Delegate regions?
Yes, have a discussion about it. And then they all come together and they determine whether or not they're going to adopt.
So yours was to.
Whether or not the resolution committee is recommending it or not. They hear from all of those delegate assemblies.
Yes, but I just want to make sure we're not left with the impression of, well, they already did the work, so we can just vote how they voted. Because I don't think that's what we want to do.
Because we've not, we've not done that in the past, or at least I never did. I just looked at their.
This is hours of work.
Yes, yes, okay.
And, and, yeah, so.
All right.
Okay, so resolution two. Uh, school resource officer, the Illinois Association of School Boards shall request that the Illinois legislator, legislature, sorry, consider legislation providing educational funding to all school districts to offset the cost of a school resource officer. Uh, the recommendation from, from IASB is to recommend reasons. SROs help student safety, and even with grant money, it still costs districts money. And for our particular district, it also costs money. I believe they were even talking about in here about somehow factoring this into EBF as well. Um, again, um, that's just, that's just the logic. That's where things are coming from. There are some school districts that don't have SROs because they don't have access to those things, or they would be extremely expensive for them to gather because, again, you're talking about some districts in rural areas.
Believe in the practice.
That's also there, too.
Very adamant about how they utilize that role.
Yep.
Um, can I get a clarification from President Simonton about what we're doing right now? Are we discussing these or we're just reviewing and then we're going to vote individually?
We are discussing and reviewing, but we are not voting. We're allowing you to take the opportunity to take the, the information that we discuss here tonight and mow that over, and we will be, uh, voting at our next board meeting.
Okay, then I, if I could, I'd like to add a couple of comments to this resolution in particular.
Yes, please.
Um, I do want to raise an issue about the funding of police officers in schools generally. As this resolution asks the state to provide funding to pay our school resource officers, whom we are paying out of district funds currently, from my understanding. There are lingering questions in the research as to whether the employment of police officers in schools actually makes schools more safe. Have not found any indication that this is the case. And in fact, there is a lot of concern among youth organizations and school liberty groups and advocacy groups about the use of police officers in schools. There is research that points to the fact that students of color and female students actually tend to feel less safe with school resources officers in schools. So I would just say to my fellow board members that I am opposed to this resolution and that I oppose using police officers in schools generally, no matter the source of funding. And because I don't have any research that points to the conclusion, the conclusion that SROs are making schools in Oswego more safe. And I wonder if the funds that under SROs could be used in more research-based initiatives that support social and emotional health of our students, through the employment of additional cultural workers, psychologists, or through the funding of other.
One, one thing I will say, since we're going to have this discussion, one thing I'll say, um, Dr. Murio is, I don't know that, and this is just me, just one board member, I don't know that they're necessarily hand in hand. In other words, the, the, one thing that I would consider here is the resolution is basically saying, hey, um, if you have an SRO, let's have this count as part of your funding. Um, and let's have this offset rather than school districts have to take the, um, the cost. But I would, I would caution us a little bit because the resolution doesn't say you have to have an SRO. And so I think that might be a separate, that they might be two different conversations. Maybe not, maybe somebody has different, uh, uh, take on that. But in mine, it's like, okay, if we are going to have an SRO, um, what, what does that look like, right? We know we fund it, and I'll be, I'll be blunt. I've heard conversations in the past where, you know, people have said, well, why aren't you, why aren't you more like the village? Because they don't, uh, you know, they don't levy as much as you levy. Realize we pay, we pay, we're paying the vill, we're paying the village for that SRO. So, um, you're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome. Um, so I, I, I don't know that they're, they're together. I think you can have kind of both. But again, I, I understand your point, and I'm certainly not trying to, um, tell somebody else how to vote. Just, just, just a thought there on that one.
No, I agree. I had to say.
I do understand that resolution is asking. I'm just saying on the basis of like some philosophical beliefs that I have, that any vote to kind of push forward, um, funding in regards to employing police officer in schools are something that I'm going to likely push back on.
And this does have the potential to do that, so.
Well, if I just.
To do what? Wait, what do you mean?
If they, if the ending resolution, you know, if it were to pass in legislation or anything like that, or is be decided, if you have an SRO, like you were saying, then we were going to fund you. But if you don't, then you don't get any money. But if it's just part of an increased, um, funding total, then that would be a different story. So it really depends on how they would implement, uh, that, that offset.
So, so, yeah, let's talk about that, actually, because if, let's, let's say it passed. Let's say the IASB is successful, they lobby the legislator, legislator agrees, right? What that will in fact you're going to get, because you're held harmless already. What it's going to do is it's going to say, okay, you actually need more funding, right? So, so.
That's, that's kind of what I'm saying, is that, that they might tie that to having an SRO.
Uh, tie what, though?
Tie that incremental funding to having an SRO, and that's where the philosophical issue would come into play.
There's also.
Who knows how legislation, what legislation would come of it?
Can I put you on, on the spot? We have talked a lot about this, um, the philosophical point that Dr. Murio is bringing forward. I think many of us feel that way. And can you explain that we have taken steps, um, when we sign our agreements with the village and what you have done, uh, behind the scenes to change this for our district specifically?
Can, before you speak to that, I do want to say one thing, which is, as I read this, and there was a consent decree in Chicago regarding their use of police. And this is really very much in line with where the, the direction. And the consent decree came from a federal, I think it was part of a federal order that really said the purpose of our partnership with law enforcement is really to support this versus a lot of the other factors that I know are often associated with school resource officer. So I'm not commenting on our current use of him in this district. I'm just saying, when I read this and what this is outlining particularly, it is in line with federal mandates. So really, it's about the preparedness involved regarding, um, the use of, uh, the partnership with our police officer and our police departments. Very different than a lot of the ways in which, and what the, the consent decree essentially articulated. And I'm trying to remember what year this was. Um, where officers were used in mentoring programs within the schools and a variety of other factors. I'm not, again, not commenting anything here. I'm just saying that that is essentially one of the ways in which that it's really important. Now, I think for us, if we want to come back before, to come back to the board and speak to this a little bit and give some more facts about what's happening in our district, I think that's fair. Um, Dr. Kincaid, if you want to just add anything right now? Did you want to speak to her question? Yeah.
So as, sorry, as Board Member Johnson mentioned, we have, over the last couple of years, worked in strong partnership with, um, our, with OPD specifically. That's where our school resource officers come from. In order to even become a school resource officer through the police department, they have additional training above and beyond to qualify for that role. Um, and then we have not only worked and changed our, um, IGA with not only Oswego, but our other police departments. But then we have also worked in partnership this last summer to put in different kind of progressive steps to deal with two main issues that we're seeing in terms of vaping and, uh, fighting. So we have tried to really strengthen those relationships, um, through our SROs and have worked in strong partnership, especially with OPD.
Eugene?
I'm not going to repeat everything because I, I feel the same way. I, I fundamentally don't agree with how the SROs are being used in the schools. And so a vote, yes, although when I, when I was reading it, I said the same thing. I said, well, technically, this is not saying that. But fundamentally, uh, if they're there, then everything that I disagree with, it, it enables it to continue to happen and even to grow, as Dominic is saying, depending on how it's legislated. So, you know, I, I'll, I'll consider everything that I heard.
Well, I do want to revisit this, the SROs and how they are being used in our schools. Because that has never really been a conversation that we've had. Because when I hear things like, they write tickets, students get tickets, like, I don't even understand what that means. It doesn't sound good to me. So it's like. Okay. Yeah, it's like these kinds of things. I mean, last year I sat in on a trip, last year I sat in on a, um, session with triple I. And they were saying a lot of things that, um, validated some of the concerns that Dr. Murio just identified. And so I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we have a conversation about it.
Yeah, we can definitely work with the board to set up a time to come back and discuss this. But I really want to be clear that this is really about, um, there's a difference between the use of SROs or police and enforcement of discipline, school climate, culture issues versus emergency planning. I would say that our, our, our law enforcement, there is, there is a lot of research that shows, especially when you look at homeland security, our, the work that's come out of the CIA and the, I'm sorry, not the CIA, the Secret Service, around partnership and coordination with our district resource officers. It's indispensable. You cannot beat it. It is extremely important. That's very different, again, when you look at the consent decree that came out of CPS regarding the use of SROs or climate and culture purposes, right, for enforcement. Those are very different issues.
No, I agree. I think it will be very difficult to quantify or even qualify if it's being effective because we don't know what has not happened because they're there. So I don't disagree with you based on how it's written and what the intent is for. But for me, if it was limited to that scope and then not used, if they were not used in other ways, then I could say, great, but.
The, the other thing, too, that I just want to clear something up. I mean, I understand the, the legislation piece. Yes, I get it. But I, I, and if this was, if they were advocating for a block grant, I, I can understand. But I, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I am not aware of, like, the state of Illinois saying, hey, here's your EBF dollars. Now, here's how you have to spend it. Like, I don't know that that legislation has happened, so to, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm going to push back a little bit on that to, to, to question, uh, suddenly that the state is going to start telling you exactly how to spend your EBF dollars? I, I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't buy that argument. If it was a block grant, yeah, I would, I would, I would understand that, uh, and I could, I could understand that. But I, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not aware of the Illinois, Illinois, state of Illinois saying, here's your EBF money, and here's how you spend it, so.
All right, next one.
Can I?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, please.
Okay, so, um, I really, this is like awkward because I'm looking away. But, um, I really see where people are coming from when it comes to the racial equity. Because as someone who's in school, and even as, I'm white, so I'm not going to get the full experience of the profiling, but I do.
Is, is it now speaking?
Yes. But I do.
Go closer and louder.
She's, she's pretty loud, yeah.
Keep going.
Yeah, yeah.
I do think that, um, there are issues and, but my only, the only thing that's holding me back on this is, who's going to stop a fight? You're, you can't have a teacher, like, you can't make teach, put teachers in that position of physically stopping a fight. And I know there's like so many things we can do before that to stop it. But we can't, we can't make all the structural change happen in a year if, like, and I know we're not even fully discussing getting rid of ours. But in that mindset, of course, like, it's just a question of, I know there are ways to combat this and ways to stop it and structural things that have to be done with the education system. But when we get to day-to-day school, when we can't solve everything in a day, you can't have teachers stopping a fight. You can't have teachers, you know, taking care of that stuff, because that's not fair to them. They didn't sign up to physically restrain a student. And I know there's issues with how that's, um, disciplined. So I think it is a complex issue in equity. But I also don't want our teachers to have to take the burden. And also, it will, like, from the student perspective, it will, it could mess up student, teacher perspectives.
Thank you. So to your point, that's why we are going to have a broader conversation, um, at a later date. But I appreciate that comment because we, we, we need to have the conversation. Okay, go ahead.
The next one, and I'm going to preface this with, this, if this is, if this is coming from the state, um, it's not been a fun party to be a part of, but clearly we heard about it tonight. And so it, it's. In regards to the school bus driver shortage, and it's not being put out there because there's only one or two school districts suffering from this. There are a multitude that are, right? Um, and I'll get to that a little bit more. But the, the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support changes to the federal and state uh, school transportation regulations that return licensing requirements and driver trainer liability back to pre-February 2023 levels at minimum. Allow local training and testing for bus driver candidates and increase the transportation reimbursement rate from the state of Illinois to 100%. I don't think, when we talk about the school, by, by the way, I'm sorry, the recommendation from IASB is to recommend, and the reasons, there's a shortage, and some districts are, aren't, aren't, are they, they can't keep up. They can't, they can't function properly. Now, I don't think that a lot of the general public realizes that there was legislation that, I'm not going to say led to the shortage, but certainly, you know, was counter to what they were trying to do. I don't think a lot of people understand that piece. I also question, at what point is it that you're just throwing people in buses and how safe is that? Um, I, like, listen, this, it's, it's a problem. And by the way, we need roads that function. I had a parent in this district tell me they drove from Prairie Point to Wolf's Crossing, and it took them 45 minutes.
I believe it.
Forty-five minutes. Now, I, I, like, I am very sympathetic, like, like, I've had issues with, with transportation with my own son. I have a son who goes here and it's not been fun. But if it takes 45 minutes, I mean, I can sometimes make it to, to the White Sox Park in 45 minutes on a Sunday when no one's going to go to the game, but like, 45 minutes, there's no way that's not going to affect us. So I, I, this is a complex issue. I, I'll shut up because. This is.
Number three.
This is three?
Bus driver regulation. Anybody got anything to add?
I like the recommendation. I think that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I'll likely support this recommendation.
I, 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 I wrote that I was reluctant because we have a problem, we have to solve it. But, boy, it, it doesn't feel good rolling back regulations and if something goes wrong. I'm going to be honest with you, so. All right, you want me to go to the next one?
Next one.
Resolution four, employment history. Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall request the Illinois Legislature consider using the Illinois Department of Child and Family Services child abuse and neglect tracking system as a means to fulfill the employment history review of FATE'S law. The rhythmic, the recommendation from IASB is to not recommend reasons. They state it's not the right system to deal with FATE'S law.
You know, administrators, we're looking for you guys to weigh in on this stuff, too. If you've got anything to say.
Uh, Dr. Zremke, I mean, I, do you want?
You can go first, go ahead.
No, I would say that I agree with the rationale. No, I would say that I agree with the rationale, which is really that there are both financial inefficiency limitations with this that could really overburden the process and delay the already hiring process that we've already seen. I think this reminds me of the last one, which is, there could be some good reasons to efficiently work with DCFS, but they're already overtaxed. And so for us to now, uh, defer to them for this kind of important work when they're already overtaxed with what they're doing, I, I, I'm not going to suggest we vote one way or another, but I do think we vote as, we support this, IASB.
When you say you support, you, you're saying you're going along with their recommendation?
I'm going along, I support their recommendation. Dr. Zemke?
I, I do as well.
Okay. Any other discussion? Dr. Murillo, you want me to move on?
Before we move on.
Yeah.
Going back to the bus drivers, who in our administration can give us some more insight into that?
What would be, what would, in other words, what would be the ramifications if, if, let's say, we were, uh, IASB was to successfully lobby for those pre-February 23 pieces and to get 100% funding for all transportation? Is that what you're asking, is who could? I agree, that would be good to see what would be the ramifications if.
You don't have to answer us now.
Yeah, I mean, just right off the cuff, that would help us. I mean, so the money that we spent on transportation, we'll get 100% of it back. That's a win. Now, the question is, does the state have the money to pay us? And my thinking is probably not. I think, uh, I'm more excited about the prospect of the state funding EBF, uh, the way it's supposed to be funded, than, uh, worrying about the state funding transportation 100%, which they've never done before since I've been in the business. So to now say we are going to for, for them to do it, but we'd like for them to do it. I mean, it will, it will mean we'll get, uh, 100% of the expenditure that we have related to transportation back.
And, and like I said, I was reluctant, you know, I, I, listen, we heard it tonight and I agree 100%. I, you know, if, if there's things that clearly we need to do on the communication side, there are things that we need to do on the communication side. But like, I mean, I watched, I watched a bus on a day when I sat on 34 and probably could have gotten out of my car and walked home faster. Uh, and I watched a bus pull up in my neighborhood at five o'clock, and they're sitting in the same stuff we are. I, I, it's not fun, it's not easy, and we knew it wasn't going to be easy when, when Wolf's Crossing was shut down.
Okay, thank you. All right.
If you want to.
Yeah. You want me to go to the next one or wait? Resolution five. Resolution five, alternative safe school funding. Be resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall advocate for additional funding to be provided for regional alternative safe schools to allow for an elementary appropriate program, additional funding and approved certification programs for board-certified behavior analysts, uh, in school districts, and additional flexibility with student discipline to help local districts provide the safest learning environment possible. We also ask that the state legislature review SB 100 and make any necessary changes to allow for more local control as it relates to student discipline post-COVID, especially at the elementary and middle school levels. The recommendation from, from IASB is to not recommend, reasons, EBF should already cover this. Again, this is not me speaking. I want to make this clear, that's, I'm just reading the recommendation of what EBF, or, uh, IASB said.
I agree with this recommendation to not support that.
And like, I understand where this is coming from, somebody else can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm sure we are seeing a huge increase in students with MTSS and, and, and other pieces.
And they're getting younger and younger.
They are definitely getting younger and younger. I, I, I'm not, that's not an advocate for or against that, it's just trying to explain the rationale where it came from, so.
I agree with that rationale. I would just, I guess my, I know that I was quick with my comment, but I would say that, um, the solution to that is not to separate students from local districts, put them in safe schools. In my opinion.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, and again.
That wasn't too bad.
Everybody was great, good job.
All right, moving on.
Yeah.
If you guys, you're, um, you guys can leave if you'd like.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all your comments today, they're very helpful, insightful. All right, 8.1 action item, bills for payment. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount of $7,872,824.40 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Dr. Murillo? Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ploger?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Action item 8.2, policies for second read and approval. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the following board policies. Section two, School Board two, colon, eight, zero, two, colon, one, seven, zero. Section four, Operations, four, colon, four, five, four, colon, 100. Section five, General Personnel, five, colon, two, three, zero. Section six, Instruction, six, colon, one, zero, six, colon, one, nine, zero, six, colon, two, four, zero. Section seven, Students, seven, colon, two, seven, five, seven, colon, three, zero, five, seven, colon, three, three, zero. Section eight, Community Relations, eight, colon, two, five, eight, colon, nine, five.
Second.
Dr. Murillo? Ms. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Ploger?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Action item 8.3, ratification of expenditures for costs related to the high school tracks. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to ratify the expenditures for the additional cost related to the high school tracks as presented.
Second.
And then I have, and again, I'm, so Maureen, we're, we're well within our bounds to do this, no issues. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Dr. Murillo?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ploger?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Action item 8.4, approval of board member travel expenses. Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the board member travel expenses to attend the Triple I conference in Chicago.
Second.
Dr. Murillo?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ploger?
Aye.
Ms. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Action item 8.5, approval of personnel report.
Make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Ms. Venma?
Aye.
Dr. Murillo?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmelton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Ploger?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to return to closed session?
Make a motion to enter closed session under statutes 5 ILCS 120 slash 2, C1. The Appointment, Employment, Compensation, Discipline.